And welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for June 18th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that everybody in the, in the room, please turn off or mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. We'll start off, and I will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, quorum check. I just wanted to say that we are going to indeed cancel the July 2nd meeting for lack of quorum. So, everybody's got a free night off on the 2nd of July. Rob, you can go ahead and check the other two dates.
That leaves July 9th study session and the July 16th regular meeting. Okay, yeah, I remember.
Okay.
Anything else look good? Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Public comment. This is the time of the evening where anyone from the public can come on up to the microphone, give us your name, and share your thoughts with us. Would anybody like to speak at public comment this evening on any item that is not on the Seeing no public comment, Scott, you want to jump in?
No.
No promotional videos or anything of that nature? Okay. Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move on with reports. Trustees, we'll start down with Jack. Jack, any report? Andy?
No.
Bob?
No report.
Ann? And Penny?
The farmers market is underway, and so it's been great. Been there two Saturdays, and it's terrific. It's just a nice chance for people to drop by and chat, and, you know, we've got this great farmers market, so everybody, talk to your friends, talk it up, so we can get more business. So, it's really nice, we can support the vendors. But it won't be this weekend because of the Music Fest, right? Right. So, it'll be in two weeks is the next one.
Awesome. Village Attorney?
No report tonight.
Village Manager?
Nothing this evening.
And Village President. I have two things, two items at least. The first, of course, as Penny mentioned, this weekend is the Winnetka Music Fest. It'll be Friday evening, an all-day Saturday into Saturday evening. It's a great time, a lot of good music, and I encourage everybody to come out, have a beverage, and support the cause. It's a really great community event, and it's turning into something that everybody really looks forward to. Secondly, I wanted to mention to residents who might be listening, as well as our village manager, that June 1st marked the end of leaf blower season. And as I was trying to take a nap this afternoon in preparation for this evening's meeting, the summer drone of landscapers was ringing throughout the neighborhood. I might suggest that Chief Hornstein suggests to one of his service officers that maybe Thursday, Friday, which are really the big landscape days in town, to just make the rounds and start letting people know that that's really unacceptable. You know, as I said last year, electric units are now commercial grade, you know, that they make the initial investment. I mean, for what they charge to cut a lawn around here, they should be able to buy battery-operated leaf blowers. But it really would help the overall environment because it's an all-day thing, and it can be really obnoxious, so if you'd pass it on to Chief Hornstein, I'd appreciate it.
I will. I will note that he sent out notices, the police department sent out notices to all the landscapers that we have, of record, and they have been stepping up their enforcement significantly. So, I know there's more to do, but they have put more effort in.
They must have missed Spruce Street, so...
They did, obviously.
Okay. And that's all I have for this evening. Okay, item six, approval of the agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, consent agenda. I'll ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Approval of the village council meeting minutes for June 4th, 2019, regular meeting, and the minutes of June 11th, 2019, study session. Approval of the warrant list dated May 31st through June 13th, 2019, in the amount of Resolution number R 57, 2019, approving change order number seven to the contract with BMAX Incorporated for electrical distribution system work for adoption, and resolution number R 60, 2019, easement agreement for Bull Parkway Stormwater Pump Station for adoption.
Thanks, Rob. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Motion carries, thank you. Moving right along. Item eight, A, Stormwater. On June 10th, the Nutria High School Board approved an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Winnetka to allow construction of underground stormwater storage beneath Duke Child's Field. The IGA also grants zoning approval for Nutria to improve its athletic facilities at the site. The IGA was presented in detail and discussed at last week's study session, and approval documents are on the council's agenda tonight. In addition, the council will hold a public hearing on the zoning amendments needed to finalize the IGA. First, what we're going to do tonight is Steve will go through the IGA, we'll go ahead and vote on that. There's also this letter of understanding that we discussed last week. We'll go through a second motion and vote on that to authorize me to sign that. And then, third, we'll go into the public hearing for David on the zoning items, and then we'll vote on that. So, first up will be Steve Saunders.
Good evening. I will just briefly review the stormwater improvements on Duke Child's Field. Recall that it consists of constructing underground stormwater storage units underneath the east section of the field, the existing soccer and lacrosse fields. That is about 14.2 acre-feet of stormwater storage that primarily serves a connection coming across from Ash Street and then discharges into the Cook County Forest Preserve project that we'll construct. It maintains the grading of the existing lacrosse and soccer fields. The location doesn't interrupt the existing varsity softball or baseball fields. It'll also provide flood protection for the Duke Child's Field area itself to make those fields more playable, and it's compatible with the long-term improvements that Nutria High School is contemplating that they'll present later. The intergovernmental agreement defines the scope and preliminary design of both the village's stormwater improvements and the Nutria High School field improvements, and it provides for cooperative design and review of both projects. Essentially, the approval of the preliminary plans is also approval of the final plans, so long as there's no significant deviation between the two sets of documents. It allows for construction activities for both projects to be synergized, and it also provides shared project benefits. And it replaces an existing declaration of restrictive covenants on the property with an easement agreement that allows utility use under a portion of the property, maintains that the property will be used for athletic purposes, and preserves open space. It provides four 11-month construction windows, starting July 5th of each one of those windows and wrapping by June, the following June 1st. The project would be constructed during one of those windows, starting either in 2019, which is almost impossible, 2020, 2021, or 2022. The financial terms, there's a one-time payment from the village to Nutria to compensate for field loss and disruption during construction. There's a late payment fee of $72 a day if we don't finish on time. There's a reimbursement clause if we would decide not to pursue the project, to reimburse Nutria High School for their design expenses incurred to date. And then, the village will also credit Nutria High School for stormwater utility fees paid on the Duke Child's Field property. President Rince also mentioned a letter of understanding. In the event that the village decides not to proceed with the stormwater improvements for the, or were not able to proceed for some other reason, Nutria and the village will use good faith to essentially negotiate an easement agreement that would terminate the covenants, maintain the open space concept, and then look at collaborative stormwater solutions on the property. So, that would be what's contained in the side letter of understanding. This picture from the '30s is just illustrative that it's a longstanding problem, that this is a huge step towards finally solving after well over 100 years. And I'll take any questions at this point on the IGA or the letter of understanding.
Okay, I'll open it up for questions. Steve?
Is, I may have missed it. Is the letter of understanding in the packet?
Yes.
I just missed it. Is it essentially the same as what was, that they?
Page 64.
That they drafted? Page 64?
Yeah.
Okay. And Peter, just, well, I'll bring it back. It's not for Steve, so, okay.
Well, you can bring...
I was going to just ask Peter, on that letter, and I know we talked about it last week, if you could just sort of explain the impact, you know, as a practical matter, of that letter, and the, if there's a body of law around good faith. What are we talking about in that respect?
Right. So, as Steve said, the letter is simply a, an understanding between Nutria and the village to use good faith and best efforts to negotiate the circumstances of the termination of the current covenant and its replacement with a new easement. And then, there's some key points that would have to be negotiated. So, all that has been agreed to here is that we will negotiate. There's nothing in the letter that would require Nutria or the village to do anything that either one of them felt was not in their own best interests. So, it's truly an agreement to try to negotiate what happens to the easement and the covenant should we not go forward, but there's no definitive agreement that we have to do X, Y, or Z.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
And I just might add, Bob, that given the, the, I'm trying to be kind here, the poor wording in the existing covenant?
Yeah.
That I think it's in both parties' best interest to clarify what it is we want with respect to the property and how it's going to look and be used going forward. So, I, just getting that old covenant out of the way for clarity's sake, I think, would be a, you know, an advantage for both parties, so...
My interest was simply that for both sides, that there's, it is a negotiation if something were to happen, and there's no obligation on either side to enter into some new agreement of some sort.
Right.
That's all.
Any other questions for Steve and/or Peter? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Would anybody in the audience like to speak on the intergovernmental agreement with Nutria High School? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back up here. Any other comments, questions, or issues that people feel inclined to raise up here? If not...
I'm just going to jump in and say that we're quiet only means that we've already discussed this many, many times. So, if others are just tuning in for the first time, and it seems like we're just going along with things that we haven't looked at before, we've looked at this for a very long time, there's been so much work that went into it. I'm very grateful to Andy, and Scott, and Chris, and Rob, and Peter for doing this, and Steve, so, and David. So, anyway, the fact that it's kind of quiet just means that we worked hard on it already.
Or we're comatose.
Yep.
One of the two.
I didn't want that to happen.
It's commonly referred to as deal fatigue. So, all right, may I have a motion to adopt resolution number R 58, 2019?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Okay, that was on the IGA. This is on the letter of understanding. May I have a motion to authorize the village president to execute the letter of understanding?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item three under this heading is the public hearing. Tonight, the council will conduct public hearings on, number one, an amendment to the zoning code to establish an approval process for public agencies requesting zoning relief in conjunction with village-initiated stormwater improvement projects, and two, an application for a special use permit and variations for improvements to the Duke Child's Field athletic facilities. Community Development Director David Shown will review the particulars briefly, and then we'll call for comments from the audience. I now open the public hearing. David, you can take it from here.
Okay. Thank you. So, briefly, just to summarize the improvements at Duke Child Field that require some zoning relief, they are adding a JV softball field, as well as making some improvements to the existing fields. They are approving the traffic access by adding a parking lot on the north, in the northeast corner, along Hibbert, which will provide additional parking for visitors to the site. They are replacing an existing maintenance support building near the center of the development. They're installing improved spectator amenities such as bleachers and the like, and then there's additional safety enhancements with some netting, which I'll show you in a moment. The zoning ordinance amendment, as President Rince indicated, will establish a new process by which, for stormwater-related projects, the village council can approve required zoning relief. It lists the types of zoning relief the council could approve, and it provides the council as the body that would hold the public hearing on the amendments which we're doing this evening. In terms of the specific zoning approvals, an athletic field associated with a high school requires special use approval, so you'd be granting that. Also, there are variations for this particular request. There is a front yard setback along Hibbert that's necessary. The two fields along Hibbert also require a setback variation. And then, the last variation has to do with the varsity baseball backstop netting, which they are adding, about 250 feet of length along the back and two sides, along first and third baseline. The netting itself would be 50 feet in height, and there, we've increased the variance to 51 feet. There is, there are materials at the dais this evening in which a finial design element has been added at the top of the poles. That adds an additional foot to the height of those. I should note that the varsity softball field will also have this netting behind the backstop, but that would comply with our height requirement, so there's no variation. The maximum height of that will be 35 feet. And then, the last item of approval the council has in the resolution before it is the certificate of appropriateness to approve the design elements. And it froze up again. Oops. There we go. So, then, just quickly to show some of the elements that are being added, the high school has provided a detail regarding the netting that would be behind, be behind the varsity softball and baseball fields, and they've also provided a number of images from communities throughout the region that have installed such netting. So, this is also showing the existing backstop in the upper right, and then the bottom shows the proposed netting. In addition, as indicated, they are adding a parking lot. They have provided a landscape plan showing landscaping along the perimeter, along Hibbert, as well as landscaping within the interior. To the right, the top right is a photo of the existing maintenance restroom facility, and the bottom right is showing what they propose to replace that with. And then, they are also adding some signage at the entrances to the parking lot, as well as the corner of Hibbert and Willow Road. This item is just showing the existing baseball batting cages and an image of what they would propose to replace it with. And then, these are some other new improvements in terms of those ball fields that don't have dugouts, what those dugouts would look like. That's on the left. The varsity fields would be adding some bleacher seating, and then, the right is the backstop for the JV fields. So, that's a quick overview of the improvements, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for David? No, and I just wanted to say that, I'll take a little, a little time to pat myself in the back. When I first looked at these renderings, the poles looked just so stark, especially in that, that one computer-generated rendering, that it occurred to me that if they at least put a, something ornamental on the top of it, it might make it look a little bit nicer and maybe more like a flag pole than a, than a netting pole. So, that's why the, the height went up to 51 foot. Obviously, with a 16-inch round tube, it's going to be a fairly substantial-sized ball, and that's why it's an additional 12 inches. So, that was, that was the change there. Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Any comments, questions, or issues anyone would like to raise on the zoning relief for Duke Child's Field? Come on up.
I just had a question. Do you think it's not appropriate?
Sure. Anything's appropriate. If you showed up, you have...
Okay.
Nancy, could you come up to the, to the microphone? Thank you.
Okay. My name is Nancy Helstrom, and I live on Cherry Street at the very end block going, and we see Duke Child's Field and everything else all the time. And I think these plans are great, but then I got to thinking, how, and is this going to affect us in the last blocks as far as the water is concerned?
Well, the good news is, is the first item on the agenda was the approval of the stormwater improvement piece.
Right. And I probably could have asked Steve at that time.
Yeah, and Steve, you can go ahead and tell Nancy exactly how good things are going to be when we finish this.
Because when you put more things on the surface of the playfield, what have you, you've got to be careful what's going to happen in the homes that are all along Ash, Cherry, and Oak.
It's going to get much better.
Wonderful.
Right. So, this, this will actually be a significant improvement. It's, we're constructing well in excess of what's required to handle the runoff from the field improvements itself, and this is part of the larger phase stormwater project with the new storage facility at the Cook County Forest Preserve and improved storm sewers going up into the neighborhood, Ash, Cherry, Oak, Berkeley, that area. So, it'll be a significant improvement to the neighborhood, as well as the fields.
Okay, well, that's kind of what I thought, but I wanted your official. When is this all going to start?
That's the, that's the $64,000 question.
I mean, I got to hearing 2000, or 21, and what have you, and I thought, oh, my goodness.
Yeah. So, I mean, just, just frankly, and President Rince will probably throw something at me, but it's, it's 2020 at the earliest for, for construction.
Okay, I'll give him 2020.
We can tell when there's water all around, it can see the lake on the...
Yeah.
Well, now it'll all be underground, so that's, that's some good news there. Any other comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back up to council. Any last thoughts, comments, concerns that we need to discuss on this? Go ahead, Jack.
Let's get it done.
This side of the...
Can we intro and adopt? Or, yeah, okay.
No, Ann, I want to bring you back for another time. Okay, I am now closing the public hearing, and I've just called for final council comments. And to move along here on the voting front, I would like to, ordinance number MC 6, 2019, and ordinance amending Title 17 zoning ordinance of the Winnetka Municipal Code for Zoning and Other Relief Related to Stormwater Improvements. May I have a motion to waive introduction of ordinance number MC 6, 2019?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, may I have a motion to adopt ordinance number MC 6, 2019?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is resolution number R 59, 2019, a resolution approving a special use, variations, and certificate of appropriateness related to improvement to Duke Child's Field in conjunction with the village stormwater improvements. This is for adoption. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R 59, 2019?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Another step down the road.
Thank you. Thank you, Nutria.
Now, we got to keep on pushing. Now for something completely different. Hmm. This is resolution number R 61, 2019, and resolution number R 62, 2019, Chestnut and Spruce Streetscape Improvement Pro... Thank you for coming out, appreciate it. Improvement Project. The bids for Phase 1 Streetscape Project have been reviewed, and staff has recommendations for the project. Also included in the bid package were four optional alternates, which council will discuss tonight along with the bid award. Staff is also requesting authorization for a direct purchase of the pedestrian and road lighting fixtures, as this would save time and potentially reduce market cost. So, just to, so everybody here up at the dais understands what we're going to do, as we go through this, the first order of business would be to adopt and approve the base bid. Then, we'll go ahead and talk about the alternates, and you guys can debate which ones you want to keep and which ones you want to boot. And then, finally, we'll, I don't think we need any discussion, but we'll have, then we'll take the vote on the resolution for the pedestrian and roadway lighting fixtures. So, we'll kind of take them, the first order of business is basically the base bid, and Jim Burnall is here to walk us through it.
Great. Thank you. It's always good to follow after everybody's all happy. So, yes, so we're here this evening, and we'll be presenting to you the bid results for the Streetscape Project here. So, just to kind of, just a quick recap, I'll keep it short. In May 7th, the council directed staff to go ahead and seek bids for this project. On May 16th, we released those bids. We held a mandatory pre-bid meeting on May 30th. Seven contractors participated. We used that opportunity to make sure that the contractors clearly understood the scope of the project, the phasing that was required, and the sensitivity to our commercial district area. Finally, on June 6th, we opened those bids, and we received a total of four. This table here is the results of those bids. I am very, very happy to say that we came in way, way under budget, which is great. The apparent low bidder for the contract was ALAM Concrete Contractors with a base bid of $1,419,174.22. The table to your right is that base bid, and that includes all the four alternatives, which we'll get into, but primarily, right now, that is the discussion point. The engineer's estimate for this portion of the base bid was 1.837 million, so we're a little over 400,000 below anticipated budget. Staff reviewed the prices that were received from ALAM and determined that they were a fair price, and they were capable of completing that, that base bid work. So, with that, we could make a recommendation to approve the base bid at this point? Do you want to wait till the end?
I don't know. How do you want to do it?
It's your call.
Can we ask questions on the base bid?
Let's go ahead and ask questions on the base bid.
Okay. Sure.
It's a little foggy tonight, so bear with me.
So, Jim, when, when you looked at the difference on the itemized bids?
Right.
Where, where was the big differential between ALAM and MARTAM? The, you know, 30% difference? Where, what's, what's the linchpin on this?
Some of it, it depends on where the contractors put their profit at. For most of them, a lot in the traffic control protection is where they put their profit at. Depending on, industry term was if they're, depending how full their dance card is on projects for the season, they'll put in higher bid numbers depending on... projects for the season, they'll put in higher bid numbers depending on when, you know, what's available. ALAMP had opportunity at this point, as well as Copenhagen, which was close behind. MARTAM, from what we understand, had a pretty full schedule for the year. It was kind of one of those, sure, we'll go throw extra bodies at it and see where it's at, so the prices that we received were relatively high.
And where, if you looked at, when we had the engineer estimate, did they itemize it?
They did.
At that point as well?
They did.
And so where were the differences primarily from engineers to the base bid, you know, that's $400,000 less?
Right, so the, one of the big items here was the pavement patching, the full depth, because we took an average when the engineer's estimate was prepared, and when our consultants did that, they used higher than normal prices that we see from a firm like ALAMP that does our street rehabilitation program. So we saw an increase of about $30,000, just, just the nat pad alone. Another significant one was in, again, mobilization, there's a big fluctuation. ALAMP was higher, but they reduced their prices in other areas. And again, when Siorba and TESCA put this information together, they used an average industry-wide, so we anticipated making sure that we had enough money to budget using realistic numbers, so we didn't come in super low.
Okay, so there's nothing about the ALAMP bid that concerns you in terms of, you know, how they understood the detail that we're looking for?
Correct, that's correct.
And there's nothing there that just jumps out as a, a portion of the bid that is sort of a yellow flag?
No, nothing, nothing from us. Some of the difference, so when you look at the engineer's estimates numbers and ALAMP's, for example, the pedestrian lights, they're, they only put $25,000, $25,000, but that's just for the installation point. And the other agenda, the resolution R 62, authorizes staff to move forward, so we knock off the overhead markup right from there. So the consultants estimated high, not knowing where, how much markup the contractors would put in.
Jim, can you speak to ALAMP's experience with the village and the village's experience with ALAMP?
Sure, sure. So ALAMP has done quite a few of the large projects here for the village. You're all familiar with the Tower Road Stormwater Improvement that took place just a couple years ago. They were the lead contractor for that. They, in 2018 and in 2019, they've performed our annual street rehabilitation program for us, which is the grinding and resurfacing, the construction of the Lincoln Parking Lot that was redone in concrete with the permeable pavers, the Elm Street Train Station Parking Lot across the street, they did that as well. So they've been involved with, they have got good experience with the placement of the pavers and the concrete and the asphalt work, which really makes up what this project is all about. And since they, they can do most of those tasks in-house, there's a cost saving, so they're not hiring subconsultants to add to, with the markup.
And I will add too, that from a bidding perspective, sometimes when you have a good working relationship with a client, you feel more comfortable being aggressive with your numbers than if it was a client you never worked with before and might not know how much they're going to expect from you or not expect from you. So, and I, I think the other interesting thing about this, just to chime in on stormwater for a second, this is exactly the reason why it's important, once we have all of the pieces of the puzzle assembled on stormwater, that we go to the market and get numbers from there, because as you can see, there can be a markedly large difference between what the engineer's estimates are and what the market is actually bringing to the table. If nothing else, they, you know, it informs one another, and you might find a happy middle that makes our financing discussions just that much, much, much more meaningful. You know, this is, I, I see this all the time with engineer's estimates, Bob. This is just, you know, but there are times where they're wrong, and they're wrong the wrong way, and then it becomes painful. So it's more of an art than a science when it comes to these budgeting exercises.
It really is, and a lot of times, if we can wind up in the middle, that's where you want to be. You don't want to be super, super low, and you don't want to be super, super high, so if we can be right in the middle, that means our numbers are relatively good.
This strikes me as a, as a big, big benefit. I mean, because we're getting our contractor, if you will.
Sure.
And, you know, it's a big number.
And we're getting our parking lot, too.
Yep.
Which wasn't in the original budget.
Right.
So, any questions? Any other questions for Jim?
Very happy with ALAMP.
Yeah, they, they've done a good job.
It's a really good contractor, so.
Sure. Now I'd like to open it up to the public for comment. Would anybody in the public like to speak on this issue? Nobody? Lots of peepers tonight. Okay, we'll bring it back up here. Any, any last comments, discussions on the base bid? We'll get into the alternates in a minute. All right, with seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adopt the base bid of $1,419,174.22, and that'll be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye. So, motion made.
Had a rough day today.
That's all right.
A very rough day today. I'm glad you guys got my back. Okay, we have a motion. It's a voice vote at this point. $1,419,174.22 to ALAMP Contract, Concrete Contractors. May I have a voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now we'll go ahead and review the bid alternates, and Jim, you can go ahead and dig into those now.
Okay, so as part of this base bid, there was four alternative bids that we sought pricing on as well. So I'll walk through those with you quickly. Alternate number one, this is a private water service line. This is an extension into the commercial building on the east side of Chestnut at 555-571 Chestnut Street. This is a coordinated effort with the owner. They are looking to install a six-inch water main service, and this will provide for fire suppression, excuse me, not fire suppression, fire protection, the requirements that they have. The building owner will be responsible for the cost to install the water service line in the vault. As part of this item, that $59,670, there is some roadway patching. That totals about $11,220 at the village. We would cover that cost. The coordination of this makes sense. We don't want to have to spend the time, redo it, and then have them come back afterwards, so we're recommending that we move forward with this one. The next, we do get reimbursed on that, that's correct, and we won't start that work until we get the money in hand. This is, this exhibit right here shows the location of it. It, the connection will be made at the intersection of, I'm sorry, I've got my laser, and Rob brought it for me. At the intersection of Elm and Chestnut, we'll make a pressure connection, bring that six-inch line up to the top, and then tie it into the building. At that point, the building's plumber will take over, and they'll make the connections inside the building. The next alternative, this is the water main extension. The price, what we see from ALAMP was for $52,460. This is the extension of the new, of a new village-owned water main south of the, of the intersection of Elm and Chestnut and reconnecting to an existing water main on the east side. This is consistent with Brian Keyes's long-term water plan, and it will, it will help us so that we don't have to go back into the intersection at a future point, even when we begin a different phase. So we're trying to avoid having to go back in and rip up the same dirt twice. And since we're going to be there doing potentially that water service connection, it makes sense to do it now. And again, this is part of Brian's project. This exhibit shows the location of it. What we're basically going to do is make a connection to an existing 20-inch water main, bring it down south, and then tie into an existing water main, and leave a future stub connection, so when we begin that phase there in front of the post office, we can tie and extend it right on. The only other component that'll help with this, too, is we're going to be putting in a new drinking fountain at that southwest corner, so we will bring a brand-new copper water service to sort of feed that right into where that fountain's going to go. The next alternative that we looked at was the installation of the Festoon lighting. This was probably one of the largest that we had as far as the alternatives. This would be the installation of new Festoon lighting at the four corners of the intersection of Elm and Chestnut, as well as the entranceway into Chestnut and Spruce Street. If the Festoon lighting is not included, additional Sternberg lightings would be put in place in their locations, about 10 extra fixtures. There are 14 total Festoon lights that are proposed, so we would remove those, and then we'd just replace them with the Sternbergs that you've, that you've seen. Sternbergs are in the base bid. That's correct. So this exhibit, I put this on it just to sort of remind everybody, so we've got the Sternbergs, that each pole would be at the beginning of those lit strands, so at the four corners here, and then this is the Spruce and Chestnut at the entranceway into Spruce and Chestnut at the north end up there. So that would be the location where those poles would go. And then the final item here, this was an option that was requested of staff, and that was taking a look at putting in lighted bollards. And this would only, these lighted bollards would go at the four corners at the intersection of Elm and Chestnut. A good example of this, if you're out looking about, is at Dwyer Park. These currently exist, so it would be kind of a duplication of that. If, it would add a little ambiance to the corner, even if we did or didn't do the Festoon lights. Those bollards are designed or to be placed at each one of the corners here, so they would just go at the four-corner locations on there. Oh, I think there's, I, three, six, I think there's 12 total, 12 total that would go. So with that, so we've got our, our next step here, there was a motion to accept the base bids, which we already did. The council can modify the resolution R 61 based on the alternatives that, I guess, that we get to, and then maybe we'll stop at that point and bring it back to...
Seeing none, we can fight it out up here. I'll just, I'll just open it up for conversation on all four of them, and maybe you can lobby or not lobby for which ones you like or don't like.
I'd like to save a quarter million dollars.
So I'll, I'll jump in. I think we should absolutely do the water work, you know? That should have been part of the base bid. It makes sense to do it at the same time, and I'm grateful to the village property owner who wants to participate productively with us. On the Festoon lighting, you know, which is our big savings, I don't, I don't really care about that since we have the bollards, but I will say that I was at a conference on cities, and one of the things that is different, and I think about the bollard lighting is important, is that it, there are gender differences in what makes spaces feel safe, and for women, more lighting is proved to make the space feel safe. Now, it doesn't mean that Weneka is a terribly dangerous place, but it still is a way of making it welcoming and, and feel right. So I would like to do the bollards, but I don't have any feeling about the Festoon lighting.
I'll follow on there. I, if anybody's interested, I pulled up some pictures. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to, I went to Milwaukee on Sunday, but I was not able to make it over to Wauwatosa to take photos, but I did find some online, and to me, the, the issue with the Festoon lighting is that at night, when they're lit up, you know, they can be a real benefit, but I think that most of us are going to experience it most of the time during the day, and six months of the year, we don't even have leaves on the trees, and it looks pretty stark to my mind relative to the look that we're hoping to achieve for the village. So I think for our $250,000, I think that we can spend it more wisely. So again, if anybody's interested, I've got the photos, but I think the bollards are a great idea, and I don't know, as I'm looking to spend more money, if, I don't know if there was any thought to putting them two on the end at Spruce, Chestnut at Spruce. I mean, I don't know anything about it, but I just, you know, it doesn't, I, I have no knowledge or anything, but I, I don't know if it was discussed or whatever, but anyway. But I, I do, I do think that the bollards are a good idea.
Yeah, Bob, I know you, you took a trip.
Some of us, yeah, some of us are dedicated, Penny.
Oh, you went.
Actually went to a...
You went.
Actually, it was distributed to you.
I want to hear what you have to say.
Oh, oh, my God, okay, so there you go. Obviously, I've never read my mail.
Oh, I actually did the field trip.
Thank you, Trustee Dearborn.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate the homework.
President.
Caught.
And I was, you know, I think, I think everyone had a feeling that you'd see little Italian lights and so on at night, and it'd be really attractive and so on, but during the day is the issue. And I was sort of alarmed, actually, at the size, and I, and I asked David if, if the size of the poles that we were talking about were going to be the same, and I think they basically were, as Wauwatosa. And these are big poles with big electrical equipment on them, and it's just, you know, at night you wouldn't see it, during the day, I just, I, I don't really think it fits in our, in our town. And I would echo the sentiment that, you know, unless it was absolutely perfect and you had to have it, this amount of savings is really significant. And so, but the other three, I agree. I mean, I think the other three are, are nice additions, and we should, we should do that, one, two, and four.
Andy?
Completely agree. Thanks for the pictures, Bob. I, I thought they, they were helpful. I thought it sort of looked like abandoned streetcars.
I, I'm so, I'm so nailed.
And, you know, it's like a no-brainer when you're saving 250. There's a lot we can do with that, so.
What are you thinking, Jack?
I, I can't add anything to any, what everybody said. I agree. I don't think they would fit in very well. I think they, they'd look great for like six months, and then people would be like, huh, the light bulbs are burning out, and stuff like that. So I, I think we can save the money in that for the project.
Yeah, and the, the one thing, you know, and I was, I mean, look at, I love lights. I mean, there's no question about, I love lighting up the night as much as I possibly can, and will go to great lengths to do so, but the one thing that occurred to me that, you know, this, this is our state in Maine here at, at Elm and Chestnut, and it just didn't feel like Weneka to me, you know? It just, I mean, this is a town, I think, of very understated elegance and, and class, and these things are just a little bit more in-your-face, and I think, you know, suits the community sensibility. And I'm not being, you know, snobbish about it or anything, it's just that knowing the way people in this community view themselves, that I think they appreciate the understated thing, and I think the bollards go much to that point, because, again, it's a classic element. It looks good during the daytime, because you have this little bollard that's kind of protective, and, but at the same time, in the evening, they glow, and they, they add a little ambiance to the corner, and I think they would be a really nice addition. And obviously, the, you know, the water work is, is a no-brainer. I think part of why those were created originally is because you're always concerned that you're not going to make budget, and, you know, so you look at the things that are potentially big chunks that you can save one way or another.
Right.
But in this case, we looked at them as, as add-backs to make sure that we could get the base number done, and they worked out. So, last chance for the public to weigh in here.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I'm really excited. I think this is going to be great, so I'm so happy. And Scott, thank you for all the work that you guys did to, you know, get us all to this point, so.
This has only been in the pipeline for 12 years, so I, I think that's good, I think that's good movement for the village, so.
Oh, no, we'll do it again.
And again, and again.
Wait till I start, wait till I start building. We'll be, I'll be back.
Oh, we're not done beating this horse yet, so, okay. Doesn't sound like we have anything else to add here. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R 612019, including, which is the base bid plus alternates, one, private six-inch water service, Chestnut Street for $59,670; number two, the village water main extension at Elm and Chestnut for $52,460; and the lighted bollards at $17,500. Roll call vote.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yeah.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Okay, and just a brief, on item C, resolution number R 622018, this is a resolution waiving bidding and approving the purchase of pedestrian and roadway lighting fixtures. Just tell us why you're, why you want to do this.
These are sole-source bids. What we're trying to do is make sure that we, by the time the project is completed here in mid-October, I've got lights to put up, so I'm trying to expedite that as quick as I can. It's within budget, it was planned. We're, we're taking away any markup that the contractor can put on, and we're just moving forward for that. I got prices from our two sole-source providers, one for the Sternbergs, and then one for the Velmont, the roadway lights. That's the total of the $96,462. That's the total of the $96,462.
Any questions on that? Questions? Public comment on that? None? Okay.